Okay. Then balance and she won't be here.
Okay.
So one, two, three, four, six, seven, I think that's it.
Yeah. Good evening. I would like to call to order the study session for the city council for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for August the 21st, 2023. Thank you for joining us. We have three items on our agenda tonight. Item number one is a presentation from the Lutheran Foundation. Item number two is Proposition 123, an affordable housing update. And item number three is telecommunications occupation tax. We will start our meeting, as we do most of our meetings, with an invitation to the public to speak at any item that is on the agenda. So any one of these three items is open for discussion or to comment by the public. If, I don't have anyone signed up to speak in City Hall, but if you are here in City Hall, in council chambers, and would like to speak, you may come to the podium now. If you're joining us online, if you would raise your hand in the virtual format, we'll be happy to bring you into the meeting and have you address the council. So I'll take just a moment to see if anybody comes up to the podium and check the online for anyone raising their hand.
No one, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, I'll give it just another moment in case it's hard, sometimes hard to find that raise your hand button. I know because I've tried it. And, but I don't see anybody coming forward, so we will, we will close our public's right to speak on this and go right to our agenda item number one. This is a presentation from the Lutheran Foundation. We're very happy to have Kathy Rapola here with us. Kathy is the, is the director of the, founded the Lutheran Medical Center Foundation. So Kathy, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, am I doing this correct here?
You're just perfect.
All right.
Yep.
Okay, good.
You might want to pull it, pull it closer to you. Sometimes it helps to talk right into the microphone.
Okay, how's that?
That sounds good.
Okay, well, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor and Mr. City Manager, for this invitation for us to come and talk to the council members, as well as yourselves, about Lutheran, also about the foundation, and about our new replacement hospital. We've got a presentation here and certainly will entertain questions and answer them to the best of our ability. Would you like the format to be, I mean, I'm fine with very asking questions during the, the presentation if you like, or do you want to hold them till the end?
Why don't we sort of run through the presentation? And then we'll, we'll take questions at the end.
Okay, great.
And I'm happy to help moderate the question and answer.
Perfect. Okay. Tonight what we'll be talking about, and I wanted to give you a little bit of an overview of how this will flow. Sorry, you guys are gonna, you always have to turn around? We're gonna give you a little bit of the hospital history and some facts. Some of them are kind of fun facts for you. Certainly, we want to talk about the foundation, some new hospital updates, and our Legacy Continues campaign. We'll give you a timeline for that, as well as our progress, talking about some naming opportunities that we have available, and also how we are offering to our community to double your impact with this campaign. Here are just a few historical items for you. And many of you have probably lived in this city for many, many years and know these facts, but some of you may not know all of these facts. We opened in 2005 as a Lutheran sanitarium. For more than a century, we've expanded to meet the community's health care needs. And the expansion includes in the Lutheran Foundation being formed originally to fundraise for the hospital in 1975. In 1988, our West Pines Behavioral Health Center opened, an 80-bed facility on our campus. And then our new women's center opened in 1996. Then in two years later, we joined with St. Joseph Hospital and Exempla Medical Group to become Exempla Healthcare. That's when we became Exempla Lutheran. Then jumping up to 2001, our Breast Care Center opened in the hospital, still going strong today. In 2003, Heart Center Intensive Care Unit opened, Radiation and Oncology Department expanded, and Level 3 Emergency Department became the second busiest emergency department in the metro Denver area. Then in 2006, Collier Hospital opened, our 24-bed hospice, inpatient hospice facility right there on campus. 2010, we joined with the Sisters of Charity of Leavenworth to become SCL Health. Then in 2018, we purchased the land at Clear Creek Crossing to start beginning a state-of-the-art replacement hospital for Lutheran. In 2020, we received a Magnet Designation for Nursing Excellence. This is a very prestigious designation. Takes about two years of work to get the information together to get this Magnet Designation. And we're one of just a handful of those in the metro area who has this designation. In 2021, we kicked off our Legacy Continues campaign to fundraise for our new replacement hospital. In 2021, it was a busy year for us. We were also designated as a Level 2 Trauma Center. We were a Level 3 previous to that. The highest level is Level 1. The only difference between Level 2 and Level 1 in our state of Colorado is that Level 1 must have research and also a residency program. And those are two things that we do not have at Lutheran. But we can treat the same level of patients at Lutheran as St. Anthony, who is our closest Level 1. Also, in 2021, we broke ground on our new replacement Lutheran hospital. Then in 2022, we, two of the highest-rated nonprofit healthcare systems in our region merged, and we became a part of Inner Mountain Health. It says healthcare up there, and they've now changed the name to Inner Mountain Health, dropping the care. And then in 2024, next year, we are anticipating opening the new Inner Mountain Health Lutheran Hospital. It's actually scheduled to open in August of next year. Of course, there are things that can happen that can move that back a little bit, but we originally had fall up there. We're the only hospital in Jefferson County that delivers babies. I don't know how many knew that, but has a laboring and delivery department. We also offer an inpatient hospice program, meaning that we care for patients from their very first breath until their last and everything in between. We have a lot of awards that we've won at Lutheran, and here we're listing just a few of those. Particularly, those first two bullet points there include awards for our maternity care. We're delivering around 1,500 babies a year. And probably if I asked around the table, there was somebody whose child was born at Lutheran or was, they were born at Lutheran. It's very rare that I attend anything that somebody doesn't come up and say, oh, my grandchild was born at Lutheran, something, my two boys were actually born there as well. We are a certified comprehensive stroke center at Lutheran. We have very, very fast times, in fact, faster than the national average, for when a patient comes in with a vascular need through an ambulance, getting them up to our treatment center to get them into the cath lab to get them treated, very, very fast. You'll also see a couple other stroke awards there that we've received. We have a comprehensive cancer center that includes the specialized breast center, lymphedema clinic, and we treat just about every cancer that you might be in need of. And our heart and vascular center is also very well-known, particularly for getting people again up to the cath lab and getting them treated immediately. There's a saying with stroke, particularly Baudel'sa with heart patients, that time, time is critical, time is brain. And so we're really, really proud of that piece. And you can see there that there were a few years where we were National Chest Pain Award receivers. So now let's talk a little bit about the Lutheran Foundation. Last year, we raised $5 million. We gave the hospital back 1.5 million. We were awarded grants of more than 1.3 million last year, and our total cash and investments is actually right now more than $19 million. To talk just a little bit more about some of our services and programs, cancer services, some, these are some of the things that we have given back to the hospital. So that dollars that you saw, 1.5 million that we gave back, here's some of the things that we have supported. These are mostly things that could not have been supported without the foundation raising money, not budgeted items. Cancer services, we support integrative health services. So that includes services such as wigs for patients who have lost their hair during treatment, certain pieces of equipment that we might not be able to, to fund. We provide humanitarian care for patients in cancer services. Maybe some of them can't, don't drive and can't afford to make the trip to the hospital or the cancer center to be treated. We will help out with travel for them. In our mom-baby area, we do a lot with lactation services. We purchase the, the milk from Mother's Milk Bank for mothers who are unable to provide that service for their child. We started our, the cuddler program at Lutheran, have lots of volunteers who come and hold babies who are in our Neo-Intensive Care Unit, who need that, that hugging, that cuddling, and maybe for some reason, mom can't do it. Many of those babies were born with addictions, and sometimes we can't let the moms do it. So we have the cuddler program, which is pretty darn popular, I'll tell you that. We provide a lot of funding for our care management services. One of the things that we fund through the foundation is called a Perfect Homecoming. And this is a service in Lakewood that actually helps at-risk seniors throughout Jefferson County after they've been discharged. And we want to make sure that their home is safe for them to go back to. And they might also need help with their medication. Maybe they can't afford that first month's medication for some reason. The foundation will help pay for that, and then we hook them up with other services like a Perfect Homecoming to help them through other, other days. One of the reasons we do that with the medication too is because we don't want them to come back to the hospital because they couldn't afford to take their medication. We do provide clothing for those who come to the hospital and don't have any clothing to leave with, hygiene products, and other needs that, that patients might need. In trauma services, a couple of things that the foundation has funded include the Stop the Bleed Conference and kits. This is available to our community and our first responders as well. We do training on the Stop, Stop, Stop the Bleed program, which is applying a tourniquet. So community members would know what to do if you ran across an accident and were needing to, to do that. We give the kits out as well that has the, the tourniquet in it and teach them how to do it. We also provide funding for conferences and a lot of lectures for trauma. And then some other things, of course, include West Pines, our Behavioral Health Center. We found that we were in need of doing some additional infrastructure items there, and we paid for that. We are coming up in September, holding a neurosciences symposium. So that is mainly for our primary care docs who want to know a little bit more about what we're doing at Lutheran in the neurosciences area. We pay out for a lot of education and conferences for all of our caregivers, and that includes our administrative staff, all the way up through our physicians. We're, this, these, since COVID, actually, we've been funding a lot of resiliency programs for our staff. And COVID really took its toll on our, our medical staff, as well as our other caregivers at Lutheran. So we're providing lots of different ways when they're stressed, we can call for help for them. We call it code caring. And we actually call a code, and someone who is trained will go and help them. Maybe they've had a patient who mistreated them. We have found since COVID, we have a lot of patients who are treating our staff disrespectfully, not just through words, but violently. And we fairly often call Wheat Ridge Police to come and help us out with that. But we're doing a lot of things to help our staff through that. We want them to stay, and some of them have very, very tough jobs. We also provided some heart failure clinic care kits for patients who have come in and had some kind of a heart treatment. And we give them a kit that they take home with them, that they can weigh their food, they can weigh themselves, includes a scale. It includes a water bottle that tells them how much water to drink. They're, believe it or not, heart patients aren't supposed to drink as much water as they tell you to. They ate eight ounces, what is it, eight times a day or something like that? So it's just a nice little kit that they can take home to help them out. And of course, one of our biggest funding opportunities is with our hospice program. We support all of our bereavement counseling. The reason that the foundation pays for all of that is there is no longer a patient when someone passes in hospice care, so there's no insurance for us to bill. We can't bill Medicare, we can't bill anyone. So we offer the bereavement program for the family members for at least 13 months, and even community members can also attend. So the foundation pays for that. We just paid for our transition to a new electronic medical records system for hospice, which is called Epic. Again, education, we're paying for a lot of staff members to be educated on all the new, new things that are coming up. And we also pay for most of our palliative care services because that is not mostly covered under insurance. Hospice is funded in a very different way than regular medical care. And that's why we pay through the foundation for so much for hospice. When you check in to the hospital and you're having a procedure, you can actually get a bill, many of you may have, that shows every single item, itemized, that you've had. Every tissue box, every pill, everything that you've had will be on that bill. That's what's submitted to insurance to be paid, and then a determination is paid, how much will be paid, et cetera. Hospice is different, and that is paid per diem. We're getting about $175 a day for hospice care. Well, you can imagine that is not going to cover everything in hospice. That's the way our system is set up in the United States, and that's what we get paid. So we are always losing money with the care that we give to our hospice patients. But we feel like it's so important that we want to do the work, and so we are fundraising for it. This is just a few fun facts about the new hospital. As you know, in 2021, our, our board voted to move forward with a campaign, the Legacy Continues campaign, to raise money for our new hospital. This campaign is a $12 million campaign. Doesn't sound like a lot compared to how much the hospital is costing to build. However, we've never done a big campaign in this community. And so we had a feasibility study done, and that's what we came up with. It's a five-year campaign, again, started in 2021, and we are already at 84% after two years. So we're doing very well, and I have no doubts that we're going to make that goal and exceed that goal. Here's a few, there's a picture up there. If you haven't been to the hospital recently, I think most of you did take, or some of you have taken a tour, so that was great. We offer those to the community. We have 151 miles of, of, I can't read that, electrical wiring in the hospital. I'm sorry, that's 1,051 miles, yeah, of wiring. The building is 123.5 feet tall. You may know that because I think there's a restriction here. What's another one up there? You can read them, but there's 403 toilets in, in the new hospital. So just a few fun facts, and I think you have these in your information as well. This is a timeline of our campaign, and we are, as I mentioned, exceeding the timeline. We are at 84% already. And we will continue probably doing the campaign even after the hospital opens up and open it up to a campaign that almost every person in the community would be able to have the means to participate in. That's pretty important to us. I mentioned that we're at 84%. We've raised $10 million in two years for the campaign. It is a comprehensive campaign, I might mention that, which mean that it means that it includes everything we raise money for, not just the new hospital, because we're continuing to raise money for everything in the hospital, as well as the new hospital right now. One of the things that we are offering the community with the campaign, the Legacy Continues, are naming opportunities. So we have different areas of the hospital that are available for naming for a particular donation. And this is just a sample of some of the naming opportunities. This document is always changing because we are walking through and our architects are coming to us and saying, well, did you know there's this room? And we're like, whoa, I guess not. We must have not looked at that one on, I have all the drawings in my wall, in my office on the wall, but some of these things aren't on there. So we're always changing it, and we're always open to meeting with donors to craft the kind of gift that they would like to leave with a naming opportunity. Another great thing our board voted to do was to offer a matching program. So for any gift of $25,000 or more, the board will match it dollar for dollar, giving the donor the opportunity to have a naming opportunity doubled what their gift was. So if you gave $25,000, you'd get a $50,000 naming opportunity. That's up to $100,000 per donor. We also honor estate gifts in the same way with a matching opportunity. It's a little bit different than the, the cash or the pledge opportunity. And we certainly are open to talking with donors and, again, trying to meet their needs. There was something else I was going to say about the match. Oh, yes, that a lot of our matching, our donors are choosing to pledge their gift over a period of years, and we honor the match with this as well. So we're here today to just talk about how you all can help us and become our partners, and what we would, would like to ask of you. Certainly, partner in sharing our vision, which you already have, certainly, and we appreciate that. Investing that in a way that might be meaningful for you. And that could be individually, personally. It could be as a city, as a, as a council. And then also, a big part of what we're asking is for you to help us identify others who might want to be a part of what we're doing, who we can take this presentation to, or who I can go meet with one-on-one to tell them what we're doing and, and, you know, not let them miss out on an opportunity such as this. I am hoping that the city of Wheat Ridge will consider doing a gift to the Legacy Continues campaign of $25,000, which is making the match, so $25,000 or more. And we would love to see you guys have a naming opportunity. We are going to all of our communities and cities who are nearby and who we serve, and giving this presentation as well. And with that, I'll stop talking and see what questions that you might have for me.
Kathy, thank you very much.
Thank you, Elise. This is Elise Duran, I should have mentioned at the beginning, and I appreciate you doing that for us.
Okay, questions, questions from council? Counselor Hoppe.
Thank you for coming in and for your presentation. Can you, can you explain just a little bit of what the relationship will be then, now that it's Inner Mountain Health and, between Inner Mountain Health and Lutheran Foundation?
We will continue on just as we are. We, we have not what we call integrated yet, philanthropy hasn't. So I don't know exactly what changes will happen, but I know they won't be severe. As far as our fundraising goes, we will continue doing that here. As far as where the money goes, the money will stay with Lutheran. And I've gotten many, many pledges to be able to share that with everyone. The money will stay. I know Inner Mountain has huge, huge philanthropy team. They're bigger than SCL Health, so all our departments are bigger. But they really do value philanthropy. And, you know, we're looking forward to seeing what kind of maybe enhancements that that might bring us as well.
So I guess I'm just going to ask you to explain that a little bit more.
Okay.
So currently, you guys are your own separate entity, but at a certain point, you may then merge with the Inner Mountain Health philanthropy plan?
That I don't know.
Okay.
You know, I don't know, but I, but I do know that money will stay where it is.
Thank you.
Uh huh.
Thank you. Additional questions, comments? Counselor Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. When we speak about, or you speak about the Legacy Continues, is there any interest in the Blue House and the chapel being preserved? That's legacy.
That is, I would agree with you, that, that is legacy. We will, what I know is that we will be selling that property, and that includes everything that's on the campus except hospice. West Pines is also moving, I think you, you guys probably have heard that as well. But we will keep hospice there. That building is very new, and it's beautiful, and we'll keep some extra property, I've been told. But as far as the other buildings, the property will be sold, and I think that will be, probably be up to the developer.
Thank you.
Because there is great public interest to save those buildings?
I have heard that. I, I have heard that there is a lot of interest.
There's even little buttons.
Oh, wow, I have not seen that.
Had it, got it about a year ago when we were having meetings here.
Wow, thank you.
No, that's mine.
Okay. Okay. There you go.
Thank you.
They save the Blue House, we may have more buttons, so. Councilor Holtein.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. I really actually enjoyed, in particular, the hospice care that you guys are doing. I know how much that means to so many people and their families. Help me understand, so in your slide, you were showing that the foundation has taken in 5.9 million and then given 1.5 to the hospital?
Yeah.
Is that to fund the programs that you listed? Or do you give 1.5 to the hospital, and then you use the remaining funds to do, like, to fund those programs?
That includes what they, what we've, what we funded. When we raise money, we have funds. So we have a behavioral health fund, we have a hospice fund, we have a cancer fund. And depending on donor intent, that, those funds will go in to that fund range, and they will remain there. We call those temporarily restricted. We were asked by the hospital to give back the 1.5. They have to request money for, from us. And we take it to our board, and the board approves it. And then I don't actually give the money back to them and re, and move it from our fund to theirs until I have proof that they have done what they said they have done. So if it's a program they're going to start, they have to prove to the foundation that they've done it, and we'll reimburse them. We've, we've had occasions where maybe they didn't do what, you know, a department didn't do or couldn't do for whatever reason, something. COVID is a good example. When COVID came, kind of a lot of programs were on hold. It was just like, let's get through, let's get through this emergency. So we also, in our, our funds, have endowments. So we have a big hospice endowment that spins off interest every year. We are available, we, that interest is available for us to spend, but we never spend the endowment. Did that answer your question?
It did.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions, council? So Kathy, I, I assume you make this presentation quite a bit. How is the, and do you, do you travel sort of throughout the metro area? Or do you, are you mainly focused in Jefferson County? Or where are your efforts mainly focused?
We really mainly are focused in Jefferson County right now. Again, we've only been doing this two years. We, we could reach, we're getting a lot of patients from Clear Creek, even up into Winter Park. Believe it or not, there's a lot of Winter Park babies who were born at Lutheran. They don't have anything closer. And it's really not that far, you know, especially if you have a planned birth. So we certainly would like to eventually branch out and do this to others. We, there are just three of us in, in our department, in the foundation. And so I'm actually very, very proud of the work that we do with a pretty lean staff.
Yeah, terrific. And good response so far then?
Great response, yeah. Really had no idea. I, I'm kind of blown away by some of the opportunities that we have. And we have a lot of seven-figure asks out there right now that I'm pretty sure are going to be coming in.
Okay, terrific. Additional questions or comments for Kathy before we move? Councilor Hoppe.
Well, I guess part of the reason why they're here is for us to have a discussion on if we would like to be a part of the naming opportunity. So I would just like to see what council would like to say about that.
Maybe something we'll need to take up at a different time when we've got. Councilor Holtein.
Yes, I have a question. How has the city approached opportunities like that in the past?
I'm sorry.
How, how has the city approached, like, major asks like that in the past?
I don't know if we've ever, as long as I've been here, received an ask like this for a naming opportunity. Not that I'm aware of.
That makes an easy answer.
We may, we may need to sit and think about this and have a discussion on that.
Certainly, and there, you know, we're not, any time that I'm, I'm talking to an individual or a group, there's certainly not, and I hope I didn't present that there was any kind of a rush. It's certainly, we want people to take their time. We want the gifts to be very meaningful to those who are making them. And I'm available, any of us are available in the foundation to answer questions. Should questions arise individually or as a group, simply, you know, email me, call me, whatever. I did bring some, I don't think you guys have these.
Not as a council, no.
Yeah, I, I did bring some of these for you to look at as well. And, you know, as I said...
Pass those to Leah, and she can pass those around.
Certainly ask any questions because, you know, we're, we're very used to those that we're talking with taking their time, and I appreciate that.
All right, Councilor Hoppe.
Yeah, I, I do just want to bring up too that we, a while ago, several years ago, we, you know, we would have people that would come and, and request funds for nonprofits, and it was in a very, like, on a one-off system. So we created a outside agency, community, new name, Community Partnership, Community Funding Partnership. It's a, and it's a committee of our residents that see these requests, and then they, they fulfill those requests. Those unfortunately happen, it happens once a year before our budget comes out. But, but that also could be an opportunity that we could have, have you present to them. And they have funds that they give out there too.
We did apply.
Oh, okay, great, okay.
We've applied for a few years now.
Okay.
And we appreciate your support on that. Thank you.
Okay, any additional questions or comments for, uh, Councilor Dozeman? You know, we've, we've broken, we've broken the H. Hoppe, Hoppe Hutchinson, Holtein, Hoppe, Holtein, Hoppe. So now we're going to go to Dozeman, so thank you very much.
Thank you. So I just, I just want to say thank you for giving the presentation, and also, you know, I really appreciate Lutheran. It's been quite the fixture in my life because I've lived in this community my entire life, and both my boys were born there. And I've, I've had a couple emergency surgeries there that have saved my life, and so very appreciative of the care that they provide in our community and for myself and my family as well. And prior to coming into the role that I, I did, I really didn't understand what the foundation did and the impact that it has on the hospital and all of the programming that it helps fund that otherwise wouldn't be available, particularly to the disadvantaged within our community. And so it's, it's really just a great feat of, of community members and physicians and members of, or residents of Wheat Ridge that, that give funds and give back. So I just want to thank them for, for being such a staple in our community, and I'm really happy to see that legacy continue into the new state of the art building.
Thank you very much. Well, Kathy, thank you very much for a great presentation. You've got a great, great organization that you work with. We've, we've, I don't think there's probably anybody here that hasn't availed ourselves of the, of the fine hospital system that we have in our community. And so I want to thank you very much and also for the work that you do to support them.
Well, thank you. And again, thank you for inviting us. And, you know, we're really proud of what we do at Lutheran, and I'm very proud to work there. I grew up in this community, and Lutheran was kind of always my hospital growing up. When the opportunity came for me to be invited to come back to Lutheran, I just couldn't pass it up. Because, as I said, I grew up here, my boys were born at Lutheran, and I just felt like, well, there's, there's some reason that I'm being asked to do this. So appreciate you and everything you've done, and thank you, everyone. And again, just let me know if you have any question. No question is silly, really. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Kathy. All right, welcome. Okay, we'll go to our, our second item on our agenda, and this is the Proposition 123, the Affordable Housing Update for Prop 123, which was, but we'll learn all about it. So we've got Lauren Mikulak, our Community Development Director. Lauren, thank you for being here. Take it away.
Yes, thank you. We are learning every week a little bit more about what Proposition 123 is. So I'm not an expert yet. Patrick's been learning, I've been learning. Jana Easley, our Planning Manager, has been learning. So it's okay if there's more questions than answer. Our primary question tonight, hopefully, is relatively straightforward. Let me see if I can get my notes to load. So we want to talk about Prop 123, which created the state's Affordable Housing Fund. It was on the ballot last November and was approved by voters. And specifically, we're seeking a consensus from council to increase, to commit to, to supporting an increase in the city's affordable housing stock at a rate of 3% annually, which is 9% over three years. I'll unpack that here in a minute. Tonight is really a high-level overview on why we would do that, less so on sort of what that commitment is. Jana is working really closely with DOLA, the Department of Local Affairs, to figure out what that is numerically, what 9% equals. So I don't have that number for you tonight. But we would, when, if, based on your direction tonight, we'd come back to you with a request for formal resolution, and we'd have that number in there. So included in your packet was a memo from us and, and also sort of a summary sheet. There's a few different summary sheets floating out there that you've probably seen. So as a quick reminder, Prop 123 takes a portion of state revenue from federal income tax and creates this Affordable Housing Fund. It's being divvied up between two existing state agencies in terms of spending that money, 60-40 division. So the, the big takeaway for that is there's a group charged with creating financing programs and a group charged with creating support programs. So it's a lot of acronyms tonight. CHAFAA, Colorado Housing Finance Authority, with OEDIT, the State Economic Development Office, that's working on financing housing, so they can issue grants or loans to buy land, to do land banking, to do debt financing, equity investments. It's almost $300 million in the first two years. So again, big takeaway, lots of potential money. And then the Division of Housing will take the 40% allocation and really focus on affordable homeownership, like down payment assistance, homelessness programs, and can even use a small portion of their funds to help local governments more efficiently review affordable housing projects. So it's an incredible revenue source, a lot of opportunity to support and invest in affordable housing. And the only way to potentially tap into those resources is to make a commitment related to affordable housing. So there's two commitments. There's only one that we need to make now and one we would consider again in three years. Tonight, it's again that commitment to increase the affordable housing supply of 9% over three years. The second commitment relates to how quickly we review affordable housing applications. There's devil in details on that, so it's still in rulemaking. And that's not a commitment that we need to make until 2027, so three years from now. If we make the commitment before November 1st, which is the state requirement, we become eligible to apply for those funds, 500-some million in the first two years. And if we don't want to apply for them as a city, you still have to make the commitment so anybody else can apply for them to expend them within the city. So nonprofits, developers, even homeowners. What's the catch? It's sort of what the cities have all been asking DOLA, and there really is no catch. So if you don't meet the goal, whatever that number ends up being in terms of how many new or converted affordable units, what happens, you have to sit on the sidelines for a year. So if we create this goal number of how many new units we, we have in the city between November 1st and December 31st of 2026, if we don't miss it, if we don't make that goal, we just sit out a year. So really, no downside, I think, in our minds. We've done a lot of listening and talking to other communities and with DOLA. The, I should mention that the homelessness program funds don't need the commitment, so those are eligible to anybody. But the takeaways for tonight are essentially, we, like many communities, are working with DOLA, learning more. We're working with them actively to figure out what that number is. The November deadline is approaching relatively quickly. So we just wanted to make sure we were on the right track and working with DOLA and get your consensus on, on making that commitment that would come before you more formally here soon.
If I could, before, before we take questions, just to hint, as, as Lauren mentioned, we'll come back to you with, with what we believe our number is. But they, DOLA is providing assistance, expertise for us to help with that. We have a meeting hopefully scheduled soon. There's been tons of webinars, but they did give us some examples of baseline numbers that we could use. And it's, it's pretty interesting how they come up with the numbers, but it's probably about 3,500 is kind of what we're looking at for the, our baseline, which would mean we would need to, to increase that about 107 units a year. And the, the 3% or the 9% could be, could all come in one year or could come over the three years. So that, we're trying to figure out that number. The 30, 3,500 is, is a, is based on some statistical numbers of the American Housing Study Survey, I believe, and that's the Jefferson County number. If we use that, we don't have to justify it with DOLA. If we want to use a, a lower number that they gave us, we have to justify it why we're using that lower number. So we'll probably, well, we'll see. We'll likely go with the number that we don't have to justify so much. So just to give you an idea, it's about 107 units a year we probably have to produce.
Okay, I'll go with Councilor Stites and Councilor Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I think, Patrick, you and I have talked about it, but would we be able to use the new units being built at 44th and Wadsworth? Would that, and I know you may not know now. Would that be counting towards the what we have or what we, what we're getting?
So our understanding is that you count the unit when the permit is issued. So because those permits, for the second phase at least, aren't issued, then those would be eligible.
Okay.
Yeah.
And if we can, well, sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to say, there, there might be, it's all over the place, like Lauren said. They, they change it weekly. It seems like there could be some flexibility where we count it as at CO also. But there's also an interesting factor in this too, which we're still trying to figure out. Since Jefferson County contributed some funding to the project through private activity bonds, they may want to get credit for some of those units also. So the legislation allows for that. They basically are telling us to figure it out amongst, amongst us and the county on how we want to share. So we haven't figured that piece out yet.
But we have to apply for it in order for Foothills to get any funding in Wheat Ridge, right?
Correct.
And what about Jeffco then? Jeffco is Foothills, I guess.
Jeffco can set their own base also, so that they're eligible for funding themselves as a, as an entity, the county.
Okay, so only in county property, not in, they can't count Wheat Ridge?
Well, they could get credit for the, the development of, of affordable housing in Wheat Ridge if, if they put any type of money or in kinds.
So it doesn't have to necessarily be on their land?
No.
Okay, got it, okay. Thank you.
Councilor Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for presenting this. Is, is it doable? I mean, do you all feel like we can get there with the, because I know we are sort of a...
Yeah.
Enclosed city.
I'm, I mean, I'm optimistic, especially with sort of the action plan and the commitments you all have made so far, and knowing some of the opportunities that we have in the pipeline. There's certainly some pros and cons in terms of what number we pick and which feels more or less doable. But yes, I, our recommendation would be, let's, let's go for it, yeah.
I, I'm, for this, this seems like just a continuation of the good things we've been doing, so.
And plus, as Lauren mentioned, there's no penalty. If we don't hit the, the 9% growth, we just have to sit out a year. We're not eligible for funding for a year. So if, if we, we set a baseline by November, and then some entities in Wheat Ridge or the city, we receive money over the next three years, but we don't hit our 9% in three years, there's no penalty. We get to keep the money. We just have to sit out for a year for any new money.
I don't know why we wouldn't do this, so, thanks.
Councilor Hoppe.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Lauren, have you guys been able to figure out if we, like, you know, part of our plan was, was kind of updating and preserving the natural occurring affordable housing that we have? And have we been able to figure out that if, like, if we're put investment into a private property and we say, "But you still have to keep it affordable," and we've discussed that we could do that via deed restrictions and whatnot, would that be able to count towards our, towards our unit?
Yes, yeah. So if a... So if a unit is converted to be deed restricted through a deed restriction or some other land use restriction, then yes, it can be counted.
Superb. And I absolutely support this. I think we should definitely move forward with it.
Thank you, Councilor Holteem.
Thank you. I also think this is a no-brainer to support it. I'm curious, I know you say that the specifics are a little bit on the fluid side right now, but with your understanding of how it's shaped now, like, how well does it align with our own action plan around the strategies we've identified? And will the funding coming in or the opportunities that this presents really align with the priorities we've set with ourselves as a city?
Yes, I think they're very much aligned, especially with the variety of different programming funds that are available. I think it creates the number that we didn't put in the action plan, so it's a good test of our mettle. The trickiness comes in really in terms of like what that number is, but philosophically and programmatically, I think they're all really aligned.
Great. And then assuming that we say yes to this and we get it done in time, then it's incumbent on the city to go apply for a specific type of funding? Or is it a big general pool of funds? Like, how does the distribution of the funds? Is it like discretionary grants? Is it, they just proportionately give it out to the communities that?
It's a little of all, I think. But there's different grant programs, some are more discretionary than others. There's assistance. So to respond to your first question, too, the Prop 123 program is going to provide programming and funding for the whole range of, the whole spectrum from homelessness to first-time homebuyers, which is great. And our plan obviously covers a good chunk of that. And again, the funding and the grant sources, again, cover all those different sources. So they've already rolled some out this year that we could have applied for. Foothills has already submitted a letter of intent for some funding for one of our projects. So it's another reason to get this in, so that they could be eligible for that.
We've gotten a couple inquiries from developers who are asking if we plan to make a commitment. So people are definitely learning quickly.
Yeah, I can see why. So with that in mind, then would, so we say yes, we get it in in time to be eligible for the funding? Would staff be bringing forward, like, here's our prioritization or here's our strategy to like work with our, you know, warm interest and our partnership with Foothills? Like, what are our own priorities in terms of going after that funding for how we decide where we want to focus that?
Yeah, I mean, we haven't gotten there quite yet, but we certainly can. I think the land baking program is one that we could potentially be in the driver's seat on. I think a lot of the equity investment programs are going to be where the developers are in the driver's seat. I haven't looked at a lot of the homelessness programs. I'm not sure if your staff has done that yet.
Yeah, we have, yeah.
Yes, we will be back in front of you as we sort of figure out how opportunistic we want to be.
And that's why it's so important to get the housing person on board. We're in the middle of recruitment right now. It's taken a little bit longer than we hoped. We thought we had somebody here recently who may have backed out. We're not 100% sure yet, but we need somebody really focused on that, putting together an action plan on how to go after the funding.
Okay, and then last question. Wheat Ridge Housing Authority, has it been reconvened in meeting?
No, not yet. So our strategy and plan talked about getting the housing staff person and then sort of figuring out what are our priorities and what is our housing fund going to fund and what are the criteria? And then what can the role be for the housing authority? So that's still on that five-year kind of placemat list, but not anything we've tackled yet this fall.
Okay, great, thanks.
Thank you, Councilor Dozeman.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. So between the two of you, Patrick and Lauren, you guys have answered most of my questions. You did speak to some pros and cons about maybe committing to either the 3%, 6%, or 9%. Can you maybe just discuss that? And, you know, I don't know that we would be reaching that 3% in this first year or not. So I'm kind of curious about what the advantages would be. And if we set the baseline for 3% for one year, next year, can we revisit that as we anticipate increasing it?
That's a great question of whether you can reset if the baseline feels like it was the wrong number. I don't know the answer to that. DOLA hasn't really talked about that. I think that's why they're putting.
I think I saw that somewhere, that there's opportunities to reset.
Yeah, every time you make a new commitment. I think because a lot of these projects take so long, our recommendation is that we do the three-year commitment and knowing that you can sort of float those units across any of that three-year time horizon. But we did sort of run some scenarios and think about why one year, two years, three years. And it feels like there's no downside to the longer commitment and some of the assurances that our partner agencies might want.
Yeah, so long as that is, we can reach that 9% over three years and it doesn't have to be allocated 3% per year in that three years, I'm all for that. But what happens if we make the 9% commitment and we oversell it? So we get up to 12%? Will that make us eligible for the following year? And like the fourth year, can we allocate that 3% towards?
Oh, that's a good question. I don't know that yet. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I don't know if you have to reapply after your first three years. I don't think you do, as long as you meet your goal. That's a good question, though, I'm not sure.
But so like, say we shoot for the moon and we far surpass it and we get above and beyond the 9%, would they allow us to count that towards a following year?
Oh, to the next round? I don't know, that's a good question. I don't know if that's been answered. We'll ask that, that's a good question.
Thank you, Councilor Ohm.
Thank you, Mayor. One question, talking about the percentages, I guess is 3% was thrown out. I'm sure somebody did some math and some algorithms, but I'm just curious, does it make a difference if we considered a higher rate, say for the first year? Just theoretically, like, what would that do based on the market? And then, you know, at the end of the three years, we'd still have nine. But like, what would that do, is that, you know, as far as like housing prices and everything else, if we said that we want to go for 6% the first year and then 2% the second year and then 1% the last third year? Is it just harder to budget? Like, why 333?
I don't think we have flexibility to split it up that way.
It's a good question that maybe DOLA thought about, but the only option they've presented to communities is 3% for one year, 6% for two, or 9% for three. Yeah, how they landed at that, I don't know. But those are our choices.
Okay. And then another question is, is on the, it says the fast-tracking, you won't have to do it until 2027.
Right.
And it kind of left that up to you. I understand with the current, not necessarily Wheat Ridge, but I understand in general that staff across the municipality is having a tough time just right now, let alone fast-tracking. What is your thoughts on that coming up in the future?
Yeah, it's a good, we've been thinking about it and talking to other people in our same situation and other communities. So maybe backing up for just a second, and I'm very optimistic for the next three years. I am cautiously optimistic for any commitment beyond that, because the fact of the matter is we have limited areas in the city where heightened density allow the, you know, investment in affordable housing at the density that needs to be economic. So I think we will have diminishing ability to grow our affordable housing stock if our charter was to remain as it is today. Which is why I think doing three years makes a lot of sense, because it may scoop up a lot of our opportunities. Beyond that, if we make another commitment in November of '26, which would then include the fast-track approvals, you know, I think we have actually done that already for Foothills a couple times. They had a closing in March, and every time they came in, we said, you're going to go to the top of the list. So we've had a little bit of a test and we'll sort of use these next three years, honestly. My plan is to use it as a little bit of a test to understand if we got affordable housing and we put it to the top of the line, how many days is it taking? And by using the next three years in that way, I think I'll have a better sense of whether that commitment needs more resources if we're going to have to do fast-tracks more officially in '27 and beyond. But I'm optimistic. I think it's something that we're already able to achieve when we set clear expectations sort of on both sides of the table. There's a lot of details in sort of how that's calculated, but I think we use it as a trial period.
The legislation talked about a 90-day review or approval process, but you can add, if there's a second review that's needed, you can add another, I think, 30 days on top of that or something. So 90 days is kind of the base, but you can extend that out. I think Lauren's initial thought was, we do that already. We meet those timeframes.
My last question is, and this is probably a little bit more attorney-ish, but I've heard of some communities looking at fractional ownership, so kind of a tenants-in-common that you would see. Is that something that you've heard about in the community that's coming up?
So one of the programs requires a tenant equity vehicle, which is essentially renters who gain equity and share in profits of a rental apartment. It's actually a requirement of one of the pots of money. So it comes down to whether that developer or property owner would want to access those funds. In that kind of situation, they'd be the one who's the applicant, not us, because we don't ever manage housing projects. But that is becoming an increasing conversation in the world of affordable housing because of the differential and sort of equity and the growth of wealth and generational wealth, the disparity between renters and owners. So I don't know a lot about it, but yes.
Councilor Hoppe.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Lauren, last year with the Jefferson County Economic Development Board, we went to San Antonio. And San Antonio has a program where they, for affordable housing, they have what the developers call the easy button, like the Staples Easy Button. And so I'd be happy to set you up with some of the city councils that I met down there so that you can maybe talk to them about how they do that process for the fast-track.
That's great, thanks.
Yep, and then I think that, I personally think that we should do the three-year. I think that, first off, because it's so new and everybody's still trying to get their feet underneath them, I think that our sweet spot is probably going to be at a year and a half. And so I think that we should go for the three-year.
Thank you. Lauren, I had a couple of questions. Do we know what our 60% of the AMI would be for our location?
Yeah, I have that number in front of me, if you want me to. Yeah, for a single person, that is $52,000 a year. Family of four, it's up to $74,000 per year. That's Jefferson County AMI.
Okay. And then, do the grants, we do, would the city be applying for the grants on behalf of a particular project? Or does the project apply for their own grants?
I think it's, my impression is that it's a mix so far.
Okay. And then do we have, do we have sort of, pardon me, discretionary authority to sort of interview developers or affordable home builders on, assuming that we've, that the city, so the city is sort of maybe getting a pot of money, but that's for a particular project?
Right.
Yeah, we're not going to get like an annual allocation of funding.
Project-specific?
Yeah, yep. It's grant-specific, program-specific.
Okay, and?
But we are, as you know, Mayor, we're creating a housing fund and we're putting in a portion of our short-term rental lodging tax in that. And we are going to be getting, hopefully, from some new developments, fees in lieu of affordable housing. And so we hope that fund's going to build up pretty quickly.
Okay. And do we know, have you got a feel for how oversubscribed the fund is going to be?
I was wondering that today. I don't know, I mean, yeah.
I've heard it's, yeah, it seems like a lot of money, but it's not going to go a long ways. It's my understanding.
Okay.
Yep.
So if you make a commitment to do a 9% increase over three years and the funding doesn't come, do we still have that commitment or?
I think the funding is always going to be available. There's, it's always going to be an annual contribution into these pots of money. It's just, it's going to be competitive. So, yeah, the funding's available, just are we going to be granted the funding? I guess is the question.
And is there, or is there sort of a competitive criteria that we ought to be looking, I mean, that we would be looking at?
There's not right now. I mean, right now, it's just our community is committing philosophically to increase in affordable housing. And then, I mean, I would, it's my understanding that state housing fund doesn't go away until those revenues be redirected. So it'll be here for a much longer time than our commitment will be. And I would guess that the eligibility in the future changes from something like we're talking about tonight, the commitment to other kind of criteria. But I don't, I don't know.
Okay. And if they ask, it would seem to me that it would be better to certify that these units get built when they have a CO on them, not when the permit's issued.
Yeah, they, I had an FAQ. You can count units as soon as the commitment is made. And the way that they had previously communicated is that you would count the unit at the permit, knowing that like an apartment complex will take 18 to 24 months to build, so you can count it when the permit gets issued versus when the CO is done. But I'm sure there'll be more guidance as this gets implemented more practically.
Thank you. Councilor Stites.
If we're ready, I was going to ask for a consensus that we move forward with staff's recommendation.
Looks like we have consensus there. Okay, Lauren, thank you very much. Great, great report. This will be interesting to see how this all plays out in the real world. All right, thanks so much. Welcome. Mark, thank you for joining us. Allison? Great. Okay, let's get the heavy hitters up to the table. All right.
My baby was born at Lutheran.
You must turn off your microphone if you're chopping on Fritos. All right, thank you very much. We will now turn to our Agenda Item Number Three. This is a discussion on the telecommunications occupation tax. Mr. Goff, why don't you tee this one up for us?
Sure. We have a team here this evening. Mark Colvin is our finance manager. I think you've met Mark before. He'll be back soon with our 2022 audit, financial statements. Ally, do you know Ally Scheck? Everybody know Ally Scheck, our deputy city manager?
I had my baby at Lutheran.
She's had her baby at Lutheran.
Same name tonight, yeah, it's awesome.
And Jerry Doll, our city attorney, is eating peanuts this evening. So we have a very exciting topic this evening, telecommunications occupation tax. Yes, this is something that most cities have, and it's kind of a complicated tax issue. And that's why we brought Jerry Doll in, and we've brought in some outside experts, actually, to Ken Filman, former Nevada mayor, who's also an attorney who deals in these types of issues. So I think we have a great team here with a good recommendations. So Ally, do you want to start it?
I will, thank you so much, Mr. Goff. Yes, I'll kick it off and then I'll turn it over to Mr. Colvin, who's the expert and did all the work on this. So yes, we are here to talk about a telephone occupation tax code. So just a little bit of background before I turn it over to Mark. The city made a sweeping update to its code regarding telecommunications in 1997 following the passage of the Federal Telecommunications Act of 1996, which allowed for the growth of competition in the telecommunications industry. So at that time, I think all the way back then, US West, then Quest, then CenturyLink, and now Lumen was the local monopoly holder and paid the city $190,575 per year in fees. So as part of the city's update to the code in '97, to ensure equity across the telecommunications landscape, Wheat Ridge determined that all providers would pay US West's effective per-line fee, meaning the $190,575 divided by the total number of actual lines Lumen offered became the effective per-line fee. Today, that code still exists, and today, STOF still determines the per-line fee that applies to all telecommunications providers on an annual basis based on Lumen's actual line count. So that's still, that's the code today. That 1997 code included cellular service, provided it was the primary telecommunications service, resulting in some pretty confusing local law that has not been updated. So today, the current practice is not to charge telephone occupation tax on cellular service, unlike. service unlike surrounding jurisdictions. So that's just the land, there's the landscape. And I'm going to turn it over to Mark to talk about the challenges and what we recommend we all do about it.
Thanks, Ally. Here we go. Thanks again, Ally. Clearly, as Ally teed this up, every one of us would know that Lumen is most likely not the primary telecommunications provider in the city. Since the onset of telecommunications, especially cellular communications, we've seen this trend. And so in Wheat Ridge, as it says in the staff memo that is in your packet, Xfinity is now the primary provider of telecommunications services. Back then, US West, Quest, then CenturyLink, now Lumen, have been the primary landline provider or traditional. Because Lumen, the value that Ally discussed of $190,000 was the basis for the per-line fee that all the other service providers had to pay us as what's called a business occupation tax, a BOT. It became very expensive to other providers to try to compete with whoever it was at the time, CenturyLink or Lumen, you know, all their iterations. And as Ally mentioned, the code is very confusing. It's, we could dive into the code if you'd like, but it's in your packet. Thanks, Amanda. It's confusing. Yeah, it's confusing. The new one is not confusing, the old one is. So those are our challenges. And so we did an analysis, just, we went back to 2018 for grants, because the rate that the calculation gives us was pretty consistent for all the years leading up to 2018. And then we started seeing the rate go up exponentially because it's an inverse relationship that this calculation has. The fewer landlines that Quest, Lumen, whoever, reports to us every year, and they're required to report it to us, that $190,000 divided by that increasingly lower number meant that the rate, the BOT, the business occupation tax rate that we charge all the small mom-and-pop service providers just goes up. So you can see, it started becoming a problem in 2021, when we got the notice from Lumen that their lines went from 2,896 to 1,928, which forces out a per-line tax rate that mom-and-pop service providers have to pay per line. Some of them have 10 lines, some of them have 2,000 lines. So it was becoming pricey. And so we took action last year to just freeze it at 824 until we could study it further. So this year, we studied it further. And it's a good thing we did because the rate, the lines that Lumen just reported to us a few days ago for this year that would be in effect for calendar year 2024, has gone down to 463, which would indicate that mom-and-pops would pay $34.30 a line. So in your packet, there's an example that tells you what would happen. And you're all very intuitive, you can tell what would happen. So we looked at that, and we studied the code, and we, in working with Ken Filman, we decided that we had a lot of recommendations. The goal would be to ensure equity for all the other players, to level the playing field, right, for everybody, to try to make it fair, even to Lumen. I'm sure that there's something on Lumen's side that's not equitable to them. Simplicity, predictability, and preserve the city's existing revenue stream, which is also in your packet, that talks about the revenue stream, has been 500, 600, and now 870 something thousand dollars in 2022. Alternatives were considered, which are listed in the staff memo. Those include do nothing, resulting in much higher fees, as this previous table showed. Implement a sales tax, which we felt like might bring on a taper challenge, which we don't want. Amend the code to replace Lumen, say, with Xfinity. We don't, we just didn't think that would achieve our goals. Or amend the code to implement a flat per-line fee that applies to all lines, and clarify that cellular service is included, which is in line with all of our neighbors. We did, we did some research with our neighbors, and we determined, you know, that, yeah, everyone is paying for their, their basic local exchange service, which would include, which is, that's our new definition, basic local exchange service, would include cellular, any type of over-the-air connection and landlines. So other recommendations that we have was to revise the term, basic local telecommunications service, which I just said, to read basic local exchange service in line with terminology found in state and federal law, and more consistent with our neighbors. Remove the ambiguity in the existing code around cellular service and adequately capture cellular in the definition, which we have done in our draft ordinance. Set the fee per line at 355 in 2024 for all lines, including Lumen. Adjust the occupation tax then annually going forward to be in line with the Denver Boulder Consumer Price Index. So what are our next steps? Those are our recommendations. We're requesting consensus from this council to move forward with the recommended amendments to the code, which you can see the attached draft ordinance in your packet you already have. And that would be our presentation. Any questions? Mayor, that's your job.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for making this easy math for us. I realize that you guys had to dig into it.
I had to do that for Patrick. He asked for me to dumb it down. So I dumbed it down for Patrick.
I mean, it really honestly seems like a no-brainer. And, you know, there are times when our code just has to be, needs to be updated. And there are times when, you know, we find things like, you know, in the code, and it's like, wow, that's not really how we want that to work. And so I appreciate you putting together all the work on it and presenting it, and I think you've done an excellent job of reaching all the goals.
Thank you.
Thank you. I read that twice, and it took a lot longer for me to read twice. And you made it very simplified. Thank you. I completely understand it. The one question I have is just kind of a, kind of more of a legal, I understand, legal question is, how do the, so you're saying like we would, we would set the fee, and then we would compare it to the Denver Consumer Price Index? Is that correct?
Not compare, but if it needs to go, because the Consumer Price Index goes up because of inflation.
Yeah.
Then we would analyze whether it's appropriate for us to, say, raise it from 355 per line to, say, 365 or 370, if that's what the analysis merited.
I'm just wondering, like, what do other communities doing? Are all the other communities doing exactly what we're doing? And at some point, does somebody say, wait a minute, you guys are all on the same page?
That particular example we took from Lakewood, actually.
Yeah.
The CPI. Yep. So communities are doing it differently. We have a little summary in there. But we, you know, we, again, one of our goals was to also preserve our revenue stream. And I think just, including just a simple flat rate in the code, you need a starting rate, for sure, in the code to overcome the biggest obstacle. But we, when we debated this, really liked Lakewood's take on it. They have a much, a higher starting fee than us. It's in the memo, I think it's another dollar per line, actually, higher.
I actually looked at it. I wanted to break it down because it had all different quarterly, monthly, and so for my purposes, I broke it down into just like, what is it on a per-month basis? So I can compare it. And the only one that was the outlier by a lot was Lakewood. All the other ones were .43, .67, and then Lakewood's like 4.34
Right.
per month. I don't know how they arrived at that number, but it was, it was much, much higher. At least that's what I saw.
It is higher than other cities. However, like I said, I think for us, one of the goals was also to preserve our existing revenue stream.
But also not trigger a taper question? Because if our revenues increase substantially, it would, it would trigger taper, and we'd have to go to, vote of the people to change the tax policy. Don't speak to that more.
Thank you, Counsel Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I feel like for years, there's kind of been a perception that there's not a whole lot of competition in Wheat Ridge for internet, phone, all that stuff. Like, you're kind of stuck with who's here. Do you think that doing this is going to help open up that competition?
I do. There are a lot of mom-and-pops, believe it or not. There's about 70-plus telecom service providers in the city of Wheat Ridge. Now, they're not, they don't call Wheat Ridge home, per se, but I believe it would level the playing field for those guys that have 20 lines. They, they're competitive for maybe smaller businesses, maybe businesses that are watching their budget and their spending, and maybe don't have a big need for telecom services. They, I think it will be competitive. I believe our team thinks this will be competitive.
Okay. Now, you mentioned, I think Ally said a couple times, protecting the existing revenue source. Do you think by opening it up that that could increase that revenue source?
It's a good question. We don't really know. We actually, again, use some surrounding jurisdictions. Lakewood gave us their information of how many lines they have compared to our population. We actually don't really know numbers of lines right now. So we had to take, especially with cellular, because we're not capturing that at the moment. We should be. Our code is, again, confusing on it. We're not changing our code, we're clarifying the code. So we will, I think there's, there's potential for that. But we know that landlines are going to continue to go down.
Right. Right.
I mean, it's a huge decline. So I think the question is, to what degree will cellular increase?
Well, yeah, I absolutely agree with you. I mean, landlines are, you might as well be looking for a dinosaur at that point, like,
Right.
I think, I called somebody on a landline the other day. It was the first time it rang in a year, he said. So, so I agree, and I think with, same as Counsel Hoppe, that this is a no-brainer to move forward. So thank you.
Counsel Weaver.
I just wanted to thank you all for doing the research on this, because it didn't seem like a very fun thing to do. I really appreciate it. No, I do, I think, I think the decision is the right one. I think we should move forward. I think, you know, we can, I, we should be able to assume that probably for every household, there is at least one line, right? If we're going to call a line, it's all service, or probably more. So I think that's pretty exciting, and I think tying it to the CPI is the right thing to do. I just think that makes it more regionally comparable. So thank you for that.
Counsel Holtein.
Thank you. Likewise, thanks for bringing this for just as staff, and it gives me an appreciation, again, for the proactive things staff does to, you know, be equitable to our citizens and our businesses. And I definitely think this is good to see moving forward, and I really somehow find it really entertaining to think of mom-and-pop telecommunications jobs. Because, yeah, I'm not so sure that, like, comports for me, but it is, it is good to see how we're, you know, doing things to, you know, get caught up with, with the times in such a way that is meeting us where we are and where we're going to go. So I appreciate the work on this. And I bet you guys kind of enjoyed it, because I know you guys, and you're like kind of taxi nerdy walks, and I really appreciate that about you.
It's the only way we get to be with you.
Yeah, I really appreciate that we have that fuel in our city. So good work. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Counsel Dozeman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I agree that this is the direction that we should move in. I just, I'm very concerned that it would be 355 per line on a monthly basis when, aside from Lakewood, it's not anywhere near in comparison to our neighboring cities that are larger than us. So I know that we're trying to recuperate or maintain a certain level of our revenue, but can we go into why we're on that number? Because I don't necessarily agree with that.
Yes. So one of this, again, this, we, one of our goals was to preserve the revenue stream, so we, we used that number, knowing right now that these folks are paying over $8 a line currently. We used that number, the 2022 revenue, and then estimated the total number of lines that we, it's an estimation, because like I said, we're not currently capturing cellular, based on our population. And that's how we came up with the 355 per line. I forget the total number of lines we estimated. Do you?
20,000.
20,000. We estimated 20,000 lines in the city of Wheat Ridge. So we could be wrong. We could be high, we could be low, but we used Lakewood's calculations based on their population to get to that number.
Okay. And so are we, are we pretty set on that number for this to move forward then? Or are you looking for direction?
Are you concerned that the rate is too high?
Yes.
Compared to everyone but Lakewood?
Correct.
Okay.
I mean, that is very much our recommendation. It's this council's decision if, if that's something. Jerry, do you want to weigh in on that?
You know, you can always decide to, to receive less revenue, you know? And so increasing that, or increasing that number would, would, you know, well, it'd change the per line, it would change the per line and go down. It seems to me that it's proper for the council to be able to make sort of a legitimate estimate of what is out there. And in the environment that you're in, without knowing for sure, it's fair for the council to come down to a number. And staff has, I think, spent good time to estimate it. It may well be, it may well be high, it may well be low, but it's the, any other number, I think, would have less sort of statistical support based upon all of the work that was put in to try to find the number. And I'll say that, that one of the things that was important to me in crafting the ordinance, which is also in the packet, was for the council to make some findings, which it does, which are important really just to, for defending the ordinance. It has the council making the finding that it, there's been reasonable inquiry and calculation. And, you know, you do your best, and especially in this arena. So that is one of the findings the council makes. The other things that are important to remember are to preserve that revenue stream, that revenue amount. It's not like you're trying to, to get more money. You're trying to preserve that revenue amount, but at the same time, be fair. And the present ordinance really isn't fair, because it really dings those, you know, the smaller users with much higher, much higher rate. That's why I helped to craft this in the way of making findings about the numbers that the staff has come up with, but then become findings of the, of the council, including that it's not a significant revenue change, because that would otherwise trigger taper, and we don't want to do that. It's probably not answering your question. 20,000 is really, after fair amount of calculation, the best number. If someone said, how many lines are there? That's the best number, I think, that you can get based upon the information we have.
I had a couple of questions, too. As I understand it, then, what we would be doing is providing a tax on each individual line? And so if you visualize, we all, most people, I think, have a cellphone. So that would be a charge on every cellphone. Would it, would it also extend to data lines? So if I've got a security system that has a line on there that dials in or something like that, would that be, that have a charge, a tax on it also?
I believe so. Yeah, we tried to cover every aspect of modern technology with Ken Filman's help.
It's, it's a line. And, and, you know, I think the, what was illuminating for us is kind of the way this ordinance was originally, you know, conceived of, it was really landlines, and that's what everyone had, and that was easy to measure.
Yeah. They don't have that anymore.
Other kinds of lines, but it's fair to tax the service that's out there. In fact, the service is migrating from landlines to other kinds of lines. It's a, it's a fair tax. So, yeah.
And I, and this tax is being levied on the, on the provider of those lines? And do we, and do we think that the provider is going to pass that on to the consumer? Okay.
Yeah, if you look at your bill, it's listed separately.
And so is the revenue stream somewhere around 850,000 a year? Is that, that about what we're at now?
Yes.
Okay. And 20,000 out of 33,000 of population? Is that?
We, we use 35,000 as just a population.
Yeah.
And Lakewood's, their ratio is, there's 155,000 people, there's 63,000 lines, it's about a 40% ratio. They, they actually know how many lines are, they know how many lines are reported every month. So we, we used our 35,000 people times 40%, just as a, an assumption. We had to start somewhere. And we came up with 14, roughly 14,000 lines. We knew we already had 6,000 lines through this exercise that we do every year to calculate the rate that we've been doing for 26 years.
These are the land?
So 6,000 landlines. So we estimated based on what, the 40%, we believe it was a reasonable approach to come up with a baseline number of 20,000.
Okay. But, and so that would mean that 60% of people in Wheat Ridge would not have a cellphone?
Yes.
Is that, is that right? I mean, am I looking at that the right way?
Yeah, and we also consider a number of households in this as well. Yeah.
Right, but, but everybody has a personal cell, a personal cellphone, so it's, you know, my household has, well, two, depending upon whether you've got people in the basement or not. Or, or I'm still paying for it. Okay.
I can relate, Mayor.
Good. Counsel Hoppie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as, the way I read this is that unless you're Lumen, you're paying eight-something per line currently. So this is a $5 per line decrease. So I have absolutely no problem with going what the staff has worked their butt off, figuring out what preserves our revenue stream, goes with the, with the CPI index. If that goes up, then we have the ability for it to go up. I have no problem with supporting that, so thank you.
Counsel Ollie.
Thank you, Mayor. So my, my question is, are the, I just want to get the full picture. Are the lower fees for, say, like, our bad at Golden, were those for landlines? And then there's an additional fee that came into a different calculation for the mobile lines?
No, their lines are all, their rate is all-inclusive. We don't know the math behind, we don't know if they're trying to preserve revenue or what is their basis. We just know their rates, and that it is all-inclusive for all types of telecommunications services.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel Weaver.
I would like to see if we can move a consensus forward. I appreciate the staff's recommendations, and I'd like to know if my fellow counselors support the, the recommendations as stated.
Looks like we have consensus on that.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Is that all we need to get to?
We've got more.
Yes, sir. No, we just looking to do the bare minimum here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Mayor.
Great report. Okay, that, that takes care of our business, sort of business agendas. We'll go to staff reports. Mr. Goff.
That's it for us, for staff this evening. Thank you.
Okay, elected officials' reports. Anybody, anybody raising their hand? I see Counsel Hoppie and Counsel Holtein.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to say that your Wheat Ridge lady farmers are 2-0 already, even school, those schools only been in since Wednesday, they've already played two games. And their home opener is tomorrow night at 4:30 at Pennington Field. And if you're the type of person that likes to watch that sport but doesn't like to go watch the Rockies, this is, be a really fun game to go watch. It's not a matter of just watching three people get up, three people get struck out, and maybe two runs scored all day. So it's lots of fun. Come see us at 4:30, and I have hot dogs.
Okay, thank you very much. Counsel Holtein.
Thank you. Happiness Gardens report, the eggplants are looking, they've gone from darling to substantive this week. They've gotten quite big. And on September 10th, Regenerate Wheat Ridge is hosting its Harvest Festival Potluck at Happiness Gardens, and I believe that is from 4 to 6. And it's bring a dish to share, but it's also a great opportunity to tell tales of splendor and woe from your garden, and just exchange stories and, and sometimes seeds, and definitely good things to eat, because these are all gardeners, and gardeners are usually pretty good cooks. So if you want to connect a little bit more with our local food movement, I encourage you to consider going to that potluck. I will not be there because it's my block party. I will be down the street.
Okay.
I hope, I hope some of you have a chance to go.
Thank you. Counsel Stites.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel Weaver and I have been working on some dates for our next District 3 meeting, and we actually came up with two. We have one in September, on September 16th, and one on October, October 14th. The spaces for those are 2BD because we try to use the rec center, and that ain't going to happen over the next couple of months, apparently. So we will be announcing the, the places for that, probably in District 3, so, and they'll probably be around 9:00 AM, so Saturday, the 16th and Saturday, the 14th. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any further elected officials' reports? Counsel Ollie.
Thank you, Mayor. Just have one thing, that the National Public Lands Day is coming up, September 23rd, to help clean up the Clear Creek. Last year, I took part of that, and there was 38,870 pounds of trash that got cleared out of the Clear Creek, and all that trash can flow down to Weaver, so please help out. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else to come before our meeting?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Counsel Nosslerbeck has her hand up.
Okay, Counsel Nosslerbeck.
Thanks, Mayor. I wanted to just, my neighborhood was super busy over the weekend with the Mid-Century Modern Home Tour, and I just wanted to say thanks to all the volunteers and also all of the people who bought tickets and participated in the really fun event. I wasn't able to go through some of the homes, but some of my family members did it, and it was just an incredible showcase of our incredible community here in Wheat Ridge. And I'm a huge fan of Mid-Century Modern. It's one of the reasons that my, my family chose, chose this place, and so it was really just a fun celebration. So thanks to everybody with that together, especially Local Works and all that hard work. And also thanks to all of the community members who opened up their homes to the public to just walk through and look at their stuff. That's a lot of cleaning. So thanks for everybody for cleaning up their houses, too. And then I, I also just wanted to take a quick moment. I've, I've had a chance to speak to quite a few of the members of council about this, but I've made the decision to not run for council this, this year, so in November. I, I was really contemplating it because I love this job so much, and I think you all know that I do, and so it was a, it was a tough decision to, to decide that it's just not the right time for me. One of the biggest reasons that I decided to not run for this second term in District 4 is because I think one of the most important parts of serving on this council is also being able to have a robust campaign, talking to constituents, knocking on doors, figuring out what the community and neighbors need in Wheat Ridge. And unfortunately, with my, my cancer diagnosis, I'm not in a place where I'm going to be able to put that energy forward. And so I'm very, very grateful to everyone who has provided me the opportunity to be able to serve on this council. And I think that this is an incredible opportunity for someone to step up and get out there and hear from the community, bring their issues to the table, and run for office themselves and serve District 4. And so I just wanted to let folks know that I'm, I'm not going to be running, but I sure hope that we have some great neighbors who step up and are ready, are ready to, to go out there and, and, and serve this incredible community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counsel Nosslerbeck. Any further elected officials' reports? Hearing none, that just about concludes our business. Want to thank everybody for tonight. Great presentations by all of our presenters. Thank you all for being here. We will be back at a regular city council meeting, and this council chamber is one week from tonight on September the 28th at 6:30. So between now and then, please be careful, drive safely, and, and watch out for all of the things that are happening in our city. So we will stand adjourned. Thank you.